Good morning. I call to order the meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners on this election Day, November 3rd, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weiss?
Here.
Commissioner White?
I ask you please stand and join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move to the citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for approval of the consent agenda. And today's consent agenda is approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll, approval of public forum agenda. Are there any commissioners who wish to amend or withdraw anything from the agenda? Seeing none, hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. We'll move to action items. Item number one.
Resolution 20-2297, review of Section 6 mask mandate. Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
Good morning, gentlemen. As soon as the projector decides to wake, there we go. Maybe it's just the user. All right, so here it is. It's Election Day, and let's start with our national overview. I do have to say that I think that this has been the highest two-week nationally case increase of both cases and I believe deaths since we've been doing this. As you can see, in the last two weeks, over a million new cases and 11,000 new deaths nationally. In Kansas, we have over 16,000 new cases in the last two weeks, an additional 175 deaths, but also additional 40,000 negative tests. So testing has been ramping up quite a bit. In Celine County, as of yesterday, we had 1,225 cases total since the beginning. Excuse me. That 160 active from reporting period to reporting period has stayed relatively within that kind of range, 150, 170, with some fluctuation. We have had quite a few recoveries as well that ends up offsetting some of that number, but it is still a significant workload. Average daily census at the hospital for COVID patients, I think, is set around five. Now these next couple, the one thing I want to point out for the month of October is that we started the month with 784 cases and ended with 1,185. So we had 400 new cases in the month of October. And then just starting into the month of November, yesterday, we had our single highest day rate of cases. When we did turn to the numbers to do the press release yesterday, we were at, I think it was 41 cases for yesterday, and then we had an additional 11 cases that came in after we had submitted those numbers. So we ended up with 52 total cases yesterday. You know, 52 in the grand scheme of things may not sound like a lot, but a couple of things I want to touch on that kind of puts that in some perspective, too. So investigations can take anywhere from an hour up to half a day or more, just depending upon the complexity of the investigation contacts, et cetera. Those contacts can range anywhere, potentially from two household contacts to maybe 200 at a funeral or wedding. And all of this is, right now, still being done by 11 staff, which includes our temporary staff, and we are still trying to add others. And that 11 staff is working pretty much six days a week with Sundays that we're trying to leave clear to, you know, just have a chance to rest and recharge, but at this rate, it just may not be possible, these case kind of numbers continue. All of this, though, we have a lot of people that we talk to that are understanding, you know, they get that they have to isolate, they have to quarantine, et cetera. But we also have a lot of people that, staff take a lot of abuse, just plain and simple, get cursed out, end up being the brunt of people's frustrations over the virus, whether they see it as something that's real or not, or if it's had an impact, and then staff get that impact. They've been verbally abused, verbally or borderline threatened. So it takes its toll on staff doing these cases day in and day out and dealing with the quarantining, the contacts as well. At the same time, Kansas has submitted their COVID-19 vaccination plan to the CDC on October 16th, and so now we have to start planning for when a COVID vaccine is available. Their plan calls for a three-phase approach. Phase one is limited doses are available. Phase two, more widespread doses are available. And then phase three is just continuous shift into vaccination. The link there is for where the plan is at on KDHE's website. Of course, actual dates for a vaccine are still not known. There are many that are in trials, and I'll show you a resource for that in a minute. And what's going to complicate this is that depending on when it shows up, many of these will likely be at least a minimum of a two-dose regimen initially. So we'll not only have the initial push of getting people vaccinated, then there'll be the second round, and if there's multiple vaccines, then it'll be ensuring that, you know, if you get a vaccine type A to start with, that you get type A as the second one, because more than likely, like many other vaccinations, they won't be interchangeable for these first and second doses. So there's going to be a lot of labor-intensive effort that's going to have to go into this vaccination campaign whenever it actually does kick off, which I don't expect till, really, after, you know, very early, late winter, early spring, potentially. Now, as far as in production, the COVID-19 Vaccine Tracker, this is an online website that anybody can look at, and it tells you at this point how many vaccines are being developed, what countries, how many are in trials. And as of right now, there are 11 vaccines in phase three trials. Again, no, there's no timeline on when there's going to be a final approval on any of those. And then, of course, you know, it's just a lot of logistics about the distribution of those once we get them and getting those out to people. And I expect that we're going to see a lot of hesitancy. A lot of people are probably going to want to wait until this may have been around for a while, so it's going to take a long-term approach to trying to get the vaccine out We spoke a while back about the Kansas Unified Testing Strategy, and although the full document still hasn't been released, the governor did make some comments last week, released a few graphics, again, the link is there. Right now, we have mostly, in this community, have been heavily into the diagnostic, which is dealing with symptomatic and outbreak testing. Screening has begun in places like long-term care facilities in the last month or so, where they're doing routine screening of their staff and residents, and we are not anywhere near this surveillance, and they haven't really got into yet what types of surveillance testing that this testing statewide strategy is going to cover. The goal of the statewide strategy is to double the amount of testing in Kansas by And so that probably naturally leads into where can you get tested? And so right now, these are the places that we're tracking at. We still talk about, you know, staffing it with your primary care provider, because there are lots of things that can mimic the symptoms of COVID. So you want to make sure that if it's, if the primary care thinks that it's COVID, that you get tested, that if it's not, that you're getting treated for the appropriate condition or whatever it is. But you can go to Salina Regional, Salina Family, Myra Clinic is doing it, Med Express has been doing quite a bit, CVS Pharmacy is doing a drive-through testing as well. Now, results from these different places, about how long we get them or are notified of them can vary. It just depends on the lab, the lab capacity, the kind of test it is, and how soon those reports are sent to us. So you could still get tested today, and it may take a couple of days, depending on where you go and the type of test they do, before you get those results, and then we get them and can start investigating them. But let me reiterate during that time period that you're being tested, that you're supposed to isolate at home after you've been tested. You're not supposed to go back to work, you're not supposed to go to the grocery store, you're not supposed to do anything like that. You're supposed to go home until you get your results. Usually, primary care, when they get those results, will call and at least let them know what the results are, and that if it's positive, that we will be in contact with them. There are a handful of times that when we contact people to start the investigation, that unfortunately, that's their first notification of their result. So if you're big in social media, this is one way to get involved, and it's hashtag #MaskUpKansas, and you can take a picture about why you wear your mask and post it to your social media and use that hashtag and see what other reasons people are wearing Lastly, I know the last several times this slide has been the same, but if you'll notice that under the mask order, you know, this mask order only really works if everybody does their part, wearing the mask, wearing it correctly. You know, if we can be more successful at trying to have everybody wearing the mask, then the premise is that that will help keep transmission down, and we don't have to do anything else. I hesitate to even really talk about other restrictions or measures because of difficulties in enforcement, you know, a lot of the other issues that that creates. But I think if we can all individually be responsible and just at least mask up, that this will greatly help here in the community. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Back on your numbers to start for yesterday, I think the memo that Hannah sent out said 59 new cases was the number from yesterday that she released. Did that number include those numbers that you got late yesterday?
So that number included, that 59 was from our report on Friday till Monday, and that didn't include the additional 11 that we got after the report.
Okay. So we started out with 11 before we ever got to 59, so to speak, for the coming Wednesday, for tomorrow.
Right. Right. And so that 11 is not in these numbers.
Right.
But I have it on my trend there, just so that you can see what that daily total was for that total cases yesterday, and that they're picking up this morning with ones that they weren't able to finish getting to yesterday.
Well, I guess the only thing that I will add to any of it is, and I'll just, it's piggybacking on to what you say, if more people would wear the mask, it would help. Our numbers would go down. I think that shows with the western Kansas counties that have not had a mask mandate, and all of a sudden, their numbers are soaring. I mean, I figured that the population of a couple, three of the counties out west, I mean, their infectious rate is about 6% or 7% of their total population, and we're still at about 1 and 1/2, I think, or somewhere right around there. So just my crude way of looking at them. Other comments from commissioners?
Jason, something that was concerning that you said was the verbal abuse and such that your staff is being subjected to.
Yes, sir.
Are you, do you have anything in place as far as support, helping them how to cope with this and how to work through this?
We do. We have a couple of things right now, and I'm still working on a couple of other ones. One of them we have is a, what we call the respite room, is a place that they can be able to go and decompress away from all of that and just have some quiet space to try and deal with that, because some of it can be quite brutal sometimes. We have also, oh, the other thing I ended up doing, just so that all staff were aware that it was okay, is that when that kind of behavior is happening, that they are to warn the client that, you know, this kind of abuse cannot, or, you know, this kind of language cannot continue in order for us to be able to, you know, have this conversation, and if this continues, then we will have to end this call and try and connect again later. And so putting that into an internal policy, just so that they know that, you know, there are steps that they can take to try and deal with it without feeling like they have to sit there for 15 minutes and be, you know, verbally berated up one side and down the other and just have to take it.
Truly saddens me that they're being subjected to this, and I wish the public would understand the goal and objective of these people and the job they're doing, but...
Well, and the other thing for people to really understand, too, is that, you know, my investigators are just trying to do their job. It's not until, you know, somebody at the level of the WHO, the CDC, or KDHE either declares that the coronavirus pandemic is over or that we're not going to investigate it anymore, which I don't see happening anytime soon, then we have to investigate, we have to go through these isolation and quarantine, we have to do these things, and it's not in our hands to say that we're just not going to do that anymore.
Does it ever rise to the level of criminal activity, the threats?
Not yet, thankfully. That's why I said borderline. We had a couple that have been, I think, probably getting close to that, but no, thankfully, it hasn't risen to that level yet.
And those phone calls aren't recorded, I assume?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay. The 12.7 monthly positive rate, am I wrong in saying that they kind of want that down around the 2 to 3 range, you know? Is that wrong? Have I heard that wrong?
They want it under 5.
Under 5, okay.
Which there is nowhere, nowhere in Kansas right now that is anywhere near, I believe, under 5.
You know, your point about 59 people might not sound a lot, it really is a lot in the fact that we're not only, the business community's not only dealing with those 59, they're dealing with everybody else that has to quarantine that's around them. And I know in our situation, we've almost had to close because we've been unable to open up or, you know, find enough people. So it is, it's a huge impact to the business community out there, so.
And we understand the impact. I mean, we've had staff that has had to quarantine because of either, you know, a family exposure or something like that. So, I mean, we are not immune to it, and we've had to deal with it as well.
All right. Are there any further questions or comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I originally came in here thinking I was going to amend my motion to have this not be every two weeks, because this is obviously not going away. I have changed my mind a little bit, because I just feel like we get information, and it's a chance for us to get the word out to the public every two weeks. It's not my intention to look at this and maybe in two weeks have this go away. It's not going away for a while, but I do like the every-two weeks, if it doesn't take you away from your work at the...
No, and with the changing information, I think that, I mean, we could even see last month, we had stuff at the beginning of the month, and as we got closer to Halloween, there was some new stuff, and I expect that as we get closer to Thanksgiving, we'll probably have some additional guidance or information, because predictability beyond probably the next, you know, any, at any time beyond a couple of weeks is very difficult, so.
Okay. Okay, as this is a resolution, we really don't need to take a vote, but I do need to make sure that we have a consensus of the Board of Commissioners, that we will continue with the mask mandate, and I will look to each one of you with a nod of the head and see if that's your, and that does look to be unanimous consensus, so we will continue with the mask mandate for Celine County. And thank you, Jason. We'll move to item number two.
RFA number 250-20, Resolution 20-2310, Appointment of Alternate Health Officers. Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
All right, the floor is yours, Jason.
All right, good morning again. So one of the tenets of continuity of operations is having key personnel appointed at least three deep. So that way, if you're, one of your primary staff or your key staff in a response either dies, is ill, incapacitated, whatever, somebody can be able to seamlessly step up and take on those duties. Generally, that only requires us to list their names in a continuity of operations plan. However, because the health officer is a position that is appointed in order to have two alternates identified as health officers, that we then have to appoint them. To this end, I'm requesting that Dr. David Doopy be appointed as alternate health officer one, and Dr. Robert Freelove be appointed as alternate health officer two. Both of them have agreed to this, and then if this is approved, they will take the oath of office and then be bonded, and we can cover the fee for the bonding of both of them from the Health Department Administrative Budget. So you have the resolution here that says, whereas KSA 65201 requires the appointment of a county health officer who shall perform the duties and responsibilities statuteually prescribed for the office and who shall serve in an advisory capacity to the County Board of Health, and whereas Jason Tiller, as Director of the Celine County Health Department, is a qualified local health program administrator, he is a qualified person, was appointed as the Celine County Health Officer on August 27, 2019. Whereas the Celine County Board of County Commissioners recognize the importance of continuity of operations and the need to appoint two alternate health officers, now therefore be it resolved at the Board of County Commissioners of Celine County, Kansas, that the following are appointed to serve as alternate Celine County Health Officer to be effective today and upon taking the oath. So you have the alternates there. Of course, alternatives for action would be to choose to appoint other alternatives or appoint the ones that we have requested. Staff recommendation is to appoint both of these as alternate health officers and provide that continuity of operations during this pandemic. And as mentioned previously, the total budget impact would be $1,000, which we have within our administrative section of our budget.
Okay. Believe it or not, this very thing was on my mind for the last couple of weeks, you know, as, you know, various people in various organizations fall ill, you know, where were we at? And that was, I'm glad you've taken this step. And my second point is the people that are involved here. I mean, in this case, I mean, I think most doctors would be a great alternate for us in the middle of a pandemic when we have close contact with Salina Regional, and both of these people are key people, both these doctors are key to Salina Regional. I think they're excellent choices, and my recommendation is to my fellow commissioners is that we do do this, and we do appoint these two. So at this time, I would ask other commissioners to, if they have any comments? Is there any public comment on this RFA? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 20-2310, Appointing Two Alternates to Serve as Celine County Health Officer as presented.
Second motion.
That's been moved, and seconded that we approve, RFA 250-20, Resolution 20-2310, Appointment of Alternate Health Officers. Is there any further comments? If not, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign, the motion carries. Jason, thank you for taking the time to come see us and bring us the information. We will move to item number three.
RFA number 249-20, Declare Items of No Value. Hannah Stanbaum, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a request for action from the Celine County Livestock and Expo Center, as well as the Department of Senior Services. The Expo Center has got a list of items that they wish to have declared no value and to set up a sale on Purple Wave, and then Senior Services has got an ice machine that is broken and not repairable, as well as a refrigerator that is not repairable, that they wish to have declared no value and to be disposed of. Your alternatives are for the declaration of the items of no value and authorize the sale of Purple Wave for the Expo Center items and disposal of the items for Senior Services or not declare those. Staff recommends the declaration of all items no value and to authorize the Purple Wave sale. All of these items were sent out to Celine County Departments, as well as rural fire districts, just before this request for action, to ensure that there weren't any other departments that could utilize these items. The Purple Wave auction, if authorized, would be set for sometime in December, and any of the proceeds of the sale of items would be deposited into the general fund.
Questions from commissioners? Do they have anything? Any comments? All right, I will ask for public comment, if there is any. Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we declare the items of no value as presented by staff.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve, RFA 249-20, Declare Items of No Value. Any further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign, the motion carries. Item number four.
RFA number 251-20, Conference of Radiation Control Program Director, Radon Mini Grant. Hannah Stanbaum, Deputy County Administrator.
Okay, Hannah.
Good morning again. So this request comes from the Celine County Planning and Zoning and Environmental Health Department. We learned of a potential grant opportunity and submitted a proposal and received notification that we were awarded $4,500 from the Conference of Radiation Control Program Director Grant to conduct activities of outreach, education, radon prevention, and mitigation for 2020 and 2021. Your alternatives for action today are to accept the $4,500 grant and allow for our staff to continue the plan in regards to the grant application of conducting training on radon, purchasing short-term kits, the recalibration of two of our radon monitors, perform evaluations on existing and new homes, and conduct activities for Radon Action Month that is scheduled in January of 2021, or not to accept the grant. Staff recommendation is to accept the grant of $4,500. This will aid us in the financial support needed to have these activities of education to monitor the radon situation in the Celine County area. These grant funds were not anticipated, and these funds will be strictly used to enhance already existing radon activities and expand our services. And the way that this grant is set up, a total of $2,000 is provided upfront, and then the remaining $2,500 is reimbursable upon the submission of receipts. The way that this grant would work is that it needs to be expended by August 15 of 2021.
Hannah, when is this conference?
It's not a conference, it's just the name of the organization that is offering these mini grants.
Okay, all right. Questions or comments from commissioners?
Does this involve any matching funds?
It does not.
Further comments? Any public comment? I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the radon grant as presented.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve, RFA 251-20, Conference of Radiation Control Program Director, Radon Mini Grant. Any further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign, motion carries. And... Aye. Pose same sign. The motion carries. And thank you, Hannah.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number five.
RFA number 252 dash 20, Amendment to Coronavirus Relief Fund Memorandum of Understanding with the Salina Chamber Foundation. Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Philip.
Good morning. So I find myself in an odd position this morning, which is we have great news that puts us in a pickle. And what I mean by that is, as your commission is aware, we received $11,26,434 in coronavirus relief funding and appointed a committee that reviewed applications, which were subsequently approved by your commission and then subsequently by the state of Kansas, for how we would spend that funds to support folks here in the community that had experienced impacts from the COVID-19 pandemic. One of the things that we wanted to prioritize was reimbursements or supplemental funding to businesses that had experienced business losses, particularly related to the stay-at-home order that was in place earlier this spring. And so to that end, the Advisory Committee recommended, and subsequently your commission and the state approved, allocation of just about $2.7 million to the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce Foundation, which would be used to make grants of up to $25,000 to businesses that had experienced losses of 25% of gross revenues. Here's the good news. Not enough businesses have experienced that kind of loss. Businesses in Celine County have not experienced losses of that magnitude or have been able to come up with other sources of funding. So to date, we have only approved $675,000 toward the grant program for the Chamber Foundation. That's great news. The problem is, we have another $2 million to spend on COVID relief in this community somehow. And we're getting close to that deadline, closer every day to that deadline. So in conversations with Eric Brown from the Chamber Foundation and in conversations with our state technical advisor, we've hit upon the idea of, okay, let's tweak the program requirements a little bit and see if we can expand both the pool of eligible businesses and the amount of money that those businesses are eligible for, and hopefully get some more of that money out the door. That serves the goal of the program to assist local businesses that have been impacted by the pandemic. The changes that Eric wrote up were reviewed by our Coronavirus Relief Funding Advisory Committee and recommended for your commission's adoption last Wednesday. So those changes include reducing the threshold for what qualifies a business from a 25% loss to a 15% loss, increasing the funding per employee from $2,500 to $5,000, and increasing the maximum amount of award per business from $25,000 to $50,000. So we believe, the Chamber Foundation believes that by doing, making those changes, there will be more businesses that will qualify, more businesses that will apply, and other existing businesses that have already been approved will be able to draw down more funds as well. So we're hopeful that this will help get the money out. I will say that the Funding Advisory Committee is also reviewing other ways to expend the funds if we don't come up with 2.7 million in business assistance. And we are meeting again tomorrow to, to continue that review. So that is the recommendation today. Obviously, you have alternatives for action, the first being to amend the MOU with the Chamber Foundation to incorporate those changes that I've outlined, or to not agree to the proposed changes and direct staff to seek alternatives for expending the coronavirus relief funds. Staff recommends that you accept the proposed changes. As I said, the Advisory Committee is in concurrence with that. And Eric Brown is, is here. If you have any other questions that I haven't addressed, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Eric, would you like to, to expand on that before we ask questions? Or does that pretty well cover, cover the, the bases and the gamut, I presume?
It does, yes.
Okay. At this time, I'll, I'll let the Commissioners have at it.
A couple of questions. Is there a, is there a deadline with, with the Chamber Foundation to have these in? So if there is, and then B, can monies not allocated there come back to where other entities can use it?
Yes. So the overall deadline for expending the funds is December 30. And so for our subrecipients, including the Chamber Foundation, we've said we need their receipts by December 23 in order to get the funding process by December 30. More realistically, we're trying to get folks to spend their money by the first of December so that we know if there's anything left over that we can allocate. The Chamber is accepting, the Chamber Foundation is accepting applications on a rolling basis. Per our original MOU with them, which is not changing, if they have funding left over for, from their 2.7 million by November 15, they will look to fund not only for-profit businesses, but also some of the nonprofits in the community that have experienced losses as well. So there was a built-in mechanism to expand the pool that way. Eric has indicated that they will go ahead and start taking applications from those nonprofits now, just so they have them teed up for funding on November 15. And to address your second question, Commissioner, yes. So that is exactly where the Advisory Committee is at this time, is thinking about, okay, we not, we, we, we think we're going to have a pool of funding left over. It's not just the Chamber Foundation. We have one of our local school districts who has indicated to me that they don't think they're going to expend everything that was allocated to them as well. So we don't know what that amount of money is going to be, but we are saying, okay, what is our game plan for expending whatever amount is left over? We are looking at potentially throwing out a supplemental application that we could get folks who may not have applied in the first round, for whatever reason, didn't know about it, experienced a loss after the first round, et cetera, as well as reexamining some of the things that were not funded originally to, to try and see what we could do with whatever is left over.
One, one more question, and I might not have the correct terminology, but there was a, a while back, a federal program, is it PPP? Is that where, where businesses could apply for some, for some monies and such? If they receive that, does that negate?
It does not automatically disqualify them from receiving funding under the, the Chambers program. The Chamber is asking about whether they have received funding. It wasn't just the PPP, there was also the HERO, there's the CDBG that Hannah's been talking to you about. There are a number of federal and state programs that have been out there. So the Chamber is asking about whether they've received money and how much money, because there is a, a limit. I believe that number's around 350,000. That's sort of like, they have to stay under that in total federal funding. So the Chamber's asking that question, but they're not automatically disqualified.
One more then, I'm sorry. The businesses that have questions, they can contact the Chamber and explain this, and you can walk them through it? Is that correct? Okay.
Absolutely. And the information is on our website, as well as on the Chambers website.
My question, responsibility for accurate information, you know, if, if, the, the numbers that someone puts on their application, who's responsible for making sure those are accurate? And how do you do it?
So ultimately, the business is responsible. So the, so sort of like the chain of responsibility flows downhill, I guess you would say. So the state of Kansas is the recipient of the coronavirus relief grant funds from the federal government. So they are responsible for monitoring each of the county programs. Your commission is responsible for the county program per the resolution that you passed. You have transferred a portion of that risk to each of the subrecipients, including the Chamber Foundation. And then the Chamber Foundation also enters into an agreement with each of the individual businesses in order to receive the funding. So.
If, if there was a fraudulent situation where someone did, was found to be, you know, misrepresenting their numbers, can that ultimately come back on the county if we haven't done our homework? Or?
It, it could absolutely, not just with businesses, but with any of our programs that we've, you know, if, if the city of Salina did something that wasn't kosher with the funding that we approved for them, that ultimately could come back on the county. But as I said, we have attempted to transfer that risk to subrecipients because they have agreed to assume all or a portion of that risk. So that's what the state did to us, and then what we've done with, with subrecipients. So.
All right. Further questions or comments from Commissioners? An RFA is in effect, so are there any, is there any public comment? We'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we amend the MOU with the Chamber Foundation to incorporate the changes as, as proposed.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 252 dash 20, Amendment to CRF MOU with Salina Chamber Foundation. Further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion does carry. Mr. Brown, thank you very much for attending, number one, and thank you for helping Celine County and, and all of the business community for, for distributing these funds. And I know it's, it's a great deal of work on your part, too, but it, it is badly needed. So thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
We'll move to item number six.
Election Worker Appreciation Day proclamation. I'm Cheryl Blake, Deputy County Clerk. Proclamation declaring Tuesday, November 3, 2020, as Election Worker Appreciation Day. Whereas the long hours Celine County election workers spend training and preparing for their 14-hour shifts at the polls on Election Day are unseen by most members of the public. And whereas Celine County election workers serve to protect universal suffrage and the fair and open conduct of transparent elections, and whereas Celine County election workers deserve the public's thanks for the selfless personal commitment to protect the right of every citizen to cast a secret ballot. Now therefore, let it be known that the Board of County Commissioners of Celine County, Kansas, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, November 3, 2020, to be Election Worker Appreciation Day throughout Celine County.
Any comments from Commissioners? This is, this is very appropriate on, on, on an important day to the, not just Celine, Salina, Celine County, but all of, all of our country. So there has been a lot of bustle. I don't, we had, what, 10,000 or more advance cards, too? So pretty important. So any other comments from Commissioners? If not, I will take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we proclaim today as Election Worker Appreciation Day.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we proclaim today as the Election Worker Appreciation Day. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. And thanks to everyone who works on the election. We will move into the informational item portion of our meeting. Item number one.
Idol Fund Report. Jennifer Frazier, Deputy Treasurer.
Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning. I am the Deputy Treasurer for Jim DuBois, County Treasurer. He wanted me to come share the interest earnings report for the quarter ending September 30th of, 30th of 2020. As of September 30, we have $68,795.31 earnings for the third quarter, making a interest as of the third quarter, 301, $331,084.71, which is rather down, but comparing it to the 2017, overall the year, it's ahead of that for this day and age.
All right. Questions from Commissioners? I too share that you're concerned that it's down, but that's something that someone else controls other than us. So.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Pardon? All right, hang on just a second.
I need four more from Phil. Is this about in line in, in, in what we budgeted? The thoughts, knowing that the interest on the idol fund is going to be low?
It's not in line with the 2020 budget. We were quite optimistic in the 2020 budget based on what we had seen in 2019. It is in line with what we did for 2021. And it is in line with, with what we anticipated when we did our estimates for end of 2020.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
We will move to item number two.
Roden Bridge Update. Darren Fischel, Administrator.
Good morning, Darren.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is our bi-monthly update for September, October. We did have one snow and ice event on October 25 through 27. We went out and, and treated roads for some freezing rain and then some refreezing overnight. We did set three generators at our yard. We were able to purchase this one earlier this year for our main shop area. It's large enough to run the whole building plus capacity for continuity of government if that should happen, that people need to come out and work at our facility. This generator came from the juvenile center, was transferred out to our facility, and it will run the engineering building. And this is the old generator that we, we, the older generator that we took from the shop and moved it to our traffic control building. So when, this one is hooked up right now, these two are in the process of being. So this will be the first time our facility has been able to have full power when we have an electrical outage due to an ice storm or any other such event. We rebuilt a mile and a half of gravel roads in the sundowner west subdivision. These are the before pictures. As you see, the, the road elevation had decreased significantly, significantly over the years to where the driveways were higher than the road, and the water was not able to get to the ditch. So we went in there, re-elevated the roadways and, and then re-gravelled them. So as you can see, the road crown is higher than the driveway. So when the water comes this way, it will want to go to the ditch instead of the road. This is a culvert that we replaced there, too. Nobody knew it was there, so we, we, we replaced it with a new culvert to transfer the water to the other side of the roadway. We replaced 23 cross road and entrance culverts. This was some of the, some of the, not all of them, but a few of the things that we typically find out there. This, this gentleman here had installed a This, this gentleman here had installed a polyurethane pipe that's not in accordance with our policy, but we went ahead and replaced it because it, the, the culvert that he took out was not in any good shape. But we were able to take, remove two culverts and replace it with one. If we go back to this picture here, we made a mound entrance here and, and, that didn't require a culvert, and then we installed one culvert downstream. This is just a, a picture of typically how we discover damage to a culvert. Most of it, you can't see, it's under the roadway, but most of the time, a hole will appear in the roadway. And that's typically how we know, one of the ways that we know the culvert's bad, either the rural patrolman or a citizen will call into us. And this, this shows you the damage, especially in the western part of the county where the soil is acidic. This is the reason about a decade ago, we went to aluminize culverts. They, they offer better protection against rust. This is the bottom of a culvert, and to, and what'll happen is the bottom will rust out, usually because of, it either sits there in the water or just the acidity of the soils. You can see this one here that came out, you can see the sunlight down here, so this one isn't in much better shape either. Here's a culvert that we dug out, and this is typically what happens. When they get to this point right here, it's a replacement event. There's, by the time you dig this out and try to clean it or flush it with anything, you'll find that most of the time, the bottom's rusted out also. So with the price of the culvert, it's cheaper just to dig that out and repair it than to try to spend a day or two flushing it out. This is what that looks like. And then whenever we get the opportunity, we remove culverts. And doing that other culvert, we, we found this one, talking to the property owner, he said they don't use it anymore. So that takes that maintenance expense off, because you can see why they don't use it. There's a power pole right here, it's very narrow, so no ability for anybody to turn a semi or even any, any heavy farm equipment that's prevalent these days. This is a culvert at the intersection of Armstrong and Powers. And this is some ditch work on, I can't remember the name of the road. But we get visitors once in a while. They come out and watch the guys work. Most of them, most of them are pretty harmless, but they want to see what's going on. So that's just a picture of some of the ditch cleaning. This is a mile of Cunningham Road between Schilling and Waterwell. This was an area where we had a spring. There was a spring in the roadway that was continually costing us money in aggregate, because there's not a whole lot you can do but put more aggregate. So we went in and we dug out all the clay down to, well, I'm not going to call it bedrock because it's more of a shale in Saline County. And we installed this perforated pipe. This perforated pipe has a sock around it, so water can still drain into it. They call it, it's called a French drain. And then there were two spring areas, so we excavated that and laid this French drain in there, and then covered it with a half-inch chip, which allows the water to penetrate and get down into the drain. And then we covered that with what's called GeoGrid. And if you remember, a few months ago, we purchased some GeoGrid on a Purple Wave auction. This is a way to put an aggregate product in, and it locks it together and spreads the weight of the, the truck axles and, and equipment over, over a larger area. And on top of that, we put six inches of, of rock, which was compacted and watered, and then, and then the project was seeded. We did this, we did put the French drains in the whole mile, but the whole mile was rebuilt where the ditches were pulled. And this is looking up that hill. And then this is just a recent picture showing we are getting some, some foliage growth to help the erosion. And we also edwed six miles of asphalt road with an aggregate material. This is Old 81, going north of Salina towards the Ottawa County line. These roads up here are narrow, and what we get is a lot of farm equipment that, that uses this shoulder, you know, because of the width of it, they, they have to drive on it to, to stay on the road. This is Simpson Road looking north from Crawford Street. This is Crawford Street looking west from Simpson Road. And it's just a picture of, of how we do it. This is, this is our shoulder machine. We put it on the front of a motor grader, back a truck up to it, and then it, it spreads the aggregate out. So there's not a lot of loss. Instead of just dumping it on the road and then blading it out, it actually places the material. Oh, this is a, an accident we had experienced on our county roadways during harvest. This is a, a box structure. This is not a bridge, so it's not rated. This particular combine tried to get across there, and he didn't make it. Probably would have been all right if he'd have stayed on that rail right there, but the tires got between the rail and this, this concrete wasn't enough to hold it up. But we did something different here. We got with the engineer, and this is what we put in place of that. This, to build a box there probably would have been in the nature of $50,000 or $60,000. We purchased this for about $10,000 with delivery. That's just a rough estimate, but it was less than that. And this is a railroad tank car. There's a company that cuts these in half, and then they put these headwalls on them and they put a steel floor in them. They don't work in every place, but this one was suitable. This is an earth road that's very important to the community down there because just north of here, there's a 12-ton bridge that they can't or shouldn't take their, their stuff across it. So this is, really is, for their heavy agriculture equipment, their only access. So this is that, that tank car being, being buried and compacted. And then this is a picture of the final. We did some tree work here and straightened the ditches up to improve the, the flow. We re, we did multiple laybacks during harvest and between harvests, and we repaired or replaced 97 signs. We did complete the yearly wide county pavement marking, which is striping. And we hauled 4,065 ton of rock, 4,773 ton of AB3, and 3,480 ton of sand. Most of that AB3 was for the shouldering. We have, we have about 10 culverts that we need to replace yet. We're just, with the, the leaves falling off the trees, we're going to start our winter tree work and vegetation control projects around, cutting around bridges. We have about 200 ton of rock to haul, 300 ton of sand, and about 150 ton of AB3. Our budgets are in line with the historic lavish. Our aggregate line items are depleted, but we have a full supply of aggregates in the yard, which is pretty typical. It's been dry, so.
Darren, over the last year, I've been a proponent of prioritizing a plan to, where, where we go with the rock and where we go with our sand and so forth, rather than someone just, the rural patrolman all of a sudden says, oh, we need some rock out here, and they put it on the list. And then it doesn't get taken care of. Have we, have we pursued this with the, with our IT department as far as putting a program together to identify some of these, to get them out there quicker where it hasn't been? You know, where the delivery hasn't been for 60, 90 days?
You know, I have, I have talked with Brad about that, and he wanted to get with me and come up with a, a program that we could identify those and not necessarily just, just haul it out there because it hasn't been hauled out there.
Right.
And try to get somebody to go look at them or say, tell the rural patrolman, we're, we're working on that.
Well, I know that, I mean, you know, over time, that, that you've been out, and I've been with you, and you said, yeah, here's my sheet, yeah, this should have, this has been, or, rock's been ordered out here for 90 days. Well, now we're a year into this and we're still working on it. I would, I would ask you to put the foot on the metal here and, and get something done with it.
Due to the dry weather, we have caught up a lot. But, you know, with the, the look at what we have to haul, that's, that's, that's pretty minimal for our department. And I would, I would say, just in general, we've made some, because of the flooding, we've made some strides this year. It takes about two years to recover from a flood. The first year, you spend most of your time repairing the damage from the flood, and then the second year, you spend catching up to what you neglected because you were working on the flood.
Right.
And because this commission has been very proactive in, in truck purchases, we haven't had those breakdowns either, so we've been able to move forward that way.
Well, I, I get all that, but it seems like our, our real complaints come from areas that, yeah, rock's been ordered, we just haven't gotten it out here. And we need, we need a, we need a program that identifies this to, to, you know, tell you guys, I mean, you, we got 1,100 miles of road or thereabouts. I understand that you can't, don't have that in your head. But somewhere along the line with the IT department, there needs to be a program that we can put together and identify this stuff. And, you know, a tickle file, if you will, that says, gosh, this rock was ordered out here for 30 days, 30 days ago, we need to, to step on it. I know Mura Road was one of those last year that got caught up in that, and once we looked at it, oh yeah, shoot, it was ordered 90 days ago. So, anyway, that's my comment.
Quick question, Darren. What, what's tonnage do, do your dump trucks? About 15?
Yes.
So you are 20, 30, about a little over 40 truckloads from meeting what needs to be done for, is this for the year?
This is just for what we have.
Everything that's on the books?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So we're, we're pretty close, we're within a couple of days of just, just being caught up.
Okay.
Well, one, one rain event away from being way behind again, though, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, we'll take the rain, but.
No, that's for sure. Before I go any further, I'm, this, this trailer that was on Expo Center's Purple Wave, it looks like a heavy-duty trailer to me. I mean, is that something that Roden Bridge, rather than sell this thing at a greatly reduced price, can you go take a look at that, or have you seen it?
I have seen it. I, I looked at that, and I sent Brian over there to look at it also. And Brian's on vacation this week, I haven't, haven't seen him yet.
That having been said, is it something that you guys would be able to put in your fleet out there and use it as a?
You know, without Brian or, or, because I, I, what's missing from that picture is a picture of the hitch.
Yeah.
I don't know what type of hitch that is. I'm just going to assume a penal hitch, but I don't know that for sure.
Just based on the tongue, with what's about five-inch eye beans or five-inch channel, it's probably got one of those, it doesn't have a regular trailer hitch, it's just got a?
We are looking at it.
So, okay, because I would sure hate to see us send that down the road for, you know, that's probably a $20,000 trailer or something to that effect, maybe not that much, more like $10,000 trailer, but somebody's going to buy it on Purple Wave for 1,500 bucks.
Right.
So, other comments from commissioners regarding the Roden Bridge Department? If not, thank you very much, and we'll move to item number three.
County Engineer Update. Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I'm going to provide an update on what engineering has going on. I believe our last, my last update was in August, and so this will just be an update from, from last August. So what I'm going to start with is 2020, and you have a map up there on the, the wall. And I will start with the projects that we've completed. So the first project that I'm going to, I mentioned is a Waterwell Road reconstruction project. Really, it's an upgrade from a gravel road to a paved road between Light, Burma and Lightville, and we were able to do that for a cost of $690,000 and some change. The second project is a culvert replacement project on Salem'sburg Road west of Holmes Road. And, and when I say culvert project, there were two culverts, about two 48-inch pipes at this location, and we replaced those with one 10-foot diameter steel, steel pipe that was created from a railroad tanker. In a sense, it was the picture that Darren showed you before with the, the half tank, and so this is just the, the full tank on that. So we did that project for just a little under $58,000. For our hot mix asphalt overlay projects, we completed those. We do have a couple shouldering projects on that yet to, to finish that out, but as of right now, we're at $1,060,819. But what I did is I split out the cost for Old Highway 40 between Niles and Solomon Road. And, and what I did is, because this project is about as most straightforward as a project for a two-inch overlay, I wanted to see and break that out to a cost per mile, so we can kind of compare that to our chip seal. And I'll get to that later, but, so I, I pulled out the cost for that, and for a, just a straightforward, conventional two-inch overlay with shoulders on that is about $150,000 a mile. And so that's, that's what you can kind of think of for a, for an overlay on that. Other projects that we did was on Centenia Road from Waterwell Road north, a half a mile, and that was a joint project with the city. That's one of the projects that still needs to have a shouldering, shoulder placed on it. Fourth Street from Old Highway 81 East to the area's city limits was a project, and we actually added on kind of later on in the year. And that project also needs to be shouldered as well. And then this year was a, was the year where we just did a lot of small projects kind of out in the middle of nowhere. Several low-water crossings where instead of putting in a, a pipe or some other drainage structure, the road was lowered, you know, way back in the day, and where there was a, an asphalt road was placed, you know, a couple hundred feet to where the water would go over the road. And so those haven't had much attention on, placed on them for quite a while, and so it was time that we, we just deal with, with a lot of those, as well as some other approaches to payment, payment roads, we, we added on to that. So the next project that we finished up was all of our chip seal projects. All of the projects were completed for a total of $970,000 and 431, or, sorry, $970,431. And then I broke that down to a cost per mile, and that is at $21,774. So you think, you know, $22,000 for a chip seal, and why do I bring this up? Every year when you do a chip seal, everyone calls and complains about a chip seal because they like asphalt. And so these are kind of good numbers to, to put in your, your pocket when someone's talking to you about, hey, I don't want a chip seal, I want an overlay. Well, you're looking at $150,000 per mile for an overlay versus $22,000 per mile for a chip seal. And so that's the reason why we have to have a chip seal program and not just overlay everything. It just boils down to dollars and cents. So, so I wanted to, to provide that dollar value to you, and I'm going to try to keep that updated every year, just so you guys are aware.
I, I think our resistance to the chip seal has been as, as a new construction, like it was out on Waterwell, East Waterwell, when we'd go in and that's, there wasn't an asphalt there to begin with, when we have started with a chip seal, and one year later, we've got a torn-up road.
Yes, yeah, you know, and, and we had some, didn't have a very good chip seal last year. We made some changes to the specs, we, you know, we changed the rock gradation, we, we're using a different oil, and I'm very, very pleased with the performance of our chip seals this year. And so, and so we've had less complaints than we did last year. Last year, it was, you know, we had some rock retention issues, you know, and so there was a lot more complaints. But it's still, every year, people see that, that rock going down on the road for chip seals, and, and they want to know. And so I think it's always good to have, have the, the reason why we chip seal and not overlay everything, so. Okay, so now I'm going to move on to our uncompleted projects, and these are contractual projects. These are projects that my office works and, and designs and puts together that we bid out for a contractor. So the first set of projects is the reinforced concrete box projects. And what you'll see on the map is, those are the light blue circles on the map, and it was kind of hard to see up on the wall, but you should have an 11-by-17 map in front of you as well. We've got five locations here that Reese Construction was the low bid on, and the, We've got five locations here that Reese Construction was the low bid on, and the the bid was for $586,934.90. These have been awarded here quite a while ago, and Reese just hasn't begun on those yet. They did tell me that they were going to be starting November 1st. Now, November 1st has come and and gone past, and they haven't quite started yet. I've got staff trying to reach out to them to try to get a an updated start date, so hopefully we'll we'll get that. But their their plan was to start on the project on Cloud Cloud Street. So the next one is our pavement crack seal. This project was awarded to Payment Pros for $104,974.14. Again, they stated that they were going to start on November 1st. They haven't started yet, and so I've got staff trying to reach out to them to try to get a update on on their start time. And then finally is our aggregate shouldering projects, and it's the green line on the map. APAC was awarded this project for $134,085, and that is to just add a shouldering edge wedge to Burma Road from the McPherson County Line north two miles, and then on Don Meyer Road from between Country Club and Old Highway 40. And so there the last time they gave an update on that, they were going to start here in the middle of November. So there's some a couple of projects that we've been working on that I did not put on the map, just because I want to include them in this update because it has taken a significant amount of of time in the office and the design. And so I want to mention that that's kind of something else that we've been working on. The first one is a it's a high risk rural road funded project, which is federal dollars being administered through KDOT, but that is the oh, the the road upgrade. It's to add shoulders and regrade ditches, flatter flatter ditches to have a a little safer, more traversable ditch slopes, and that's on Simpson Road between Magnolia and Crawford. We've been working on that. We've got field check plans submitted to KDOT. However, we're not really looking for a construction project until 2022 on that. Another projects with another set of projects that we've been working on for a while is the FEMA projects, and these are mitigation projects. I've got five five locations around the county. I believe I have all the documentation submitted to KDOT, or not, sorry, not KDOT, to FEMA. With FEMA, you never know when they're going to need more information, you know, so it's always something that I'm, you know, needing to provide more data on. I I'm pretty confident that we're going to get funded for all these, and and I'm anticipating around a million dollars of funds, you know, from FEMA. So it's a it's a significant project for me, you know, that that when they when they need the information, I kind of drop everything and get them what they need so we can keep this process moving forward. A couple of other items that I listed on here that we're always kind of working on throughout the year, it never really stops, is bridges inspections, culvert inspections, and small structure inspections. I know with the bridge inspections, those are the what I'm talking about there is the the federal definition of a bridge. And so every two years, we've got to do a a full inspection and then follow all the KDOT's procedures, and we're going to be starting that again here in January and February. So also, we've been working on the the road upgrade program. I know we've we've had some work sessions with the commissioners, and I'm I'm ready to kind of have that next step to present a list of present a proposed projects to you, and I'll be doing that here very, very shortly. So if you don't have any questions on the 2020, I can move on to the 2021 program.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yes.
I'd like to, do you know, like, where you're talking about the chip and seal on these roads, when the last time that those were had the chip and seal put on them? And on the ones you're cracking, I mean, doing the.
I I to be honest with you, I couldn't tell you right now. We we have tracked that. You know, one of the first things that I did is is we went, I had staff to go back in time and to to determine, you know, when roads were chip sealed, when the time the last time it was overlaid, you know, so that way we can kind of help develop a program. So I have that back in my office. I just I couldn't tell you right now. But we try to do a chip seal every four or five years. We're looking at an overlay every 10 years. And then the crack seal, what we try to do is you're you're looking at, you know, probably a four to five year timeframe is that. But what we try to do is we try to crack seal everything that we're going to chip seal the next year.
Gotcha.
Okay, so right, so the crack sealing projects that we're doing this year, we're going to chip seal next year. You know, and so that's just a starting point, what we start to to look at roads and then, you know, so, okay, we need to look at these roads, but then we we really evaluate all of our roads to to see what what needs crack seal. I mean, that crack seal is one of the most important things, in my opinion, that that you can do. You want to seal seal the water out of your base, and that's one of the most effective things.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, can we move up to the 2021 Proposed Road and Bridge Program map? All right, thank you. So I'm going to start off with some some span bridge projects. You know, these are are structures that are a little bit bigger than what would be needed for reinforced concrete box. The first one is a project on Minner Road between Gypsum Valley and Don Meyer Road. That project's been kind of hanging around for a while, but my goal is to get that project bid out this winter for 2021 construction. And then the next project or span project, span bridge project is on Waterwell Road, just west of Gypsum. And on the map, yeah, they're down here, they're kind of probably hard to see see on the the wall there, but it's got a brown rectangle around those locations there. The one that the project on Waterwell Road is we'll just we'll be designing it in 2021, you know, with a probably a construction in 2022, maybe the the winter of 2022, 23 is what we're looking at there. For the reinforced concrete boxes, I actually have two different project sets for those. And so there is actually another project set, and if you look on your map, it's the light blue circles. Those projects have not been bid yet, but the plans are about 95% done. They're kind of sitting on my desk waiting for a final review, and so we'll be getting those out for bid here very, very soon. And then my staff is working on another set of boxes right now, you know, going through the survey and design phase. And the goal is to to let those out in in 2021 as well. And so that's kind of why I broke broke up our box projects into two different groups Projects a project that I'm working on right now is a culvert replacement project, something that we've identified as a as a need are these culvert pipes underneath asphalt roads. You know, Darren showed you some pictures, you know, some very poor pipes underneath gravel roads, where we have those same strata or same pipes underneath our paved roads, you know, and that's a little more tricky to to replace those. And so right now, we're looking at, we've identified over 70 culverts to where, you know, that needs needs some attention, you know, here in the next few years. And so, you know, we felt like that it's, you know, it's it's time where we should have a program, you know, almost every year, you know, to help start replacing these. You know, it's something that the maintenance can do, and Darren and I, we we work together and, you know, try to find these locations that that engineering can can take on. So and we've got some complicated projects where it's it's called a broken back pipe, where it's just a big elevation between the upstream elevation and downstream elevation, especially on Brookfield Road. And that's it's not going to be this year, but probably a year after that, that they need to be looked at here. And so but it's it's they're going to be pretty complicated projects for a pipe replacement project, so. So that's something I'm working on right now. The next project is our the bituminous chip seals, you know, and it's the blue line on your map. So we've got about 40 mile schedule, and that's pretty typical mileage that we've been doing each year. The asphalt overlay is the black lines, and so when we've got a couple of different roads on here, and it's it's going to be a little more unique because what I would like to do, let me see here, this is on up on Old Highway 81 from K143 North to the Ottawa Road, is we I'd like to widen that. I'd like to add a two foot asphalt shoulder onto those roads. You know, Darren mentioned, you know, earlier, there's a lot of ag equipment that use those shoulders, and it's and it's almost impossible to to keep a a rock shoulder, you know, elevated to the to the top of the asphalt. And so what I'd like to do is I widen that road out, two foot on each side. We'd still probably stripe it where it's at, but it gives you that little extra room outside of the the white lane line to where it's it's we don't have a battle with the shoulder. You know, and that's one of the these two roads here. The other one is Old 40, you know, down here just west of or sorry, east of I set or I 135, you know, two of the highest traveled roads, county roads we we have, you know, we just have some issues holding a rock shoulder. And so let's go let's quit fighting it. Let's add add a asphalt shoulder and and then overlay those roads at the same time. So those are the two asphalt overlay projects that we have right now. The next is our crack seal roads, and that is on your shown as your red line. I do have what I have is you look at your map, and there's there's no red lines noted on those besides Ohio Street, because I know right away that Ohio Street is in a pretty poor shape as far as the cracks. It's got some pretty wide cracks through there. We were working on trying to quantify how much material that's going to take, and so right now, we just have Ohio Street on the program right now, and it might take all of the the tons of material that that we can budget for that. But it's something that that needs to be addressed right away before we start loosening that road. And then I did on the 2021, I put these two projects that I'm going to talk about next on the map, even though it's not going to be projects going through the engineering office, it's going to be more maintenance, but it's been part of the the conversations that we've had with our road upgrade program. And we will provide whatever information that that maintenance needs to do these, and that is the the one there's a road upgrade on Thatcher between Ohio and Crystal Springs, and that'll be a road upgrade from a earth to a gravel road with county forces. And the other one is Simpson Road between Waterwell and Minner. That's a gravel road right now, but we're going to turn that into a a little higher load carrying capacity road with that, so. That's all I have for our projects on our 2021. You know, as always, you know, I always pretty make it clear, you know, that's as of, you know, October 16th, you know, when I made this map. You know, things change constantly, you know, that's something that we we try to be flexible, as flexible as we can, you know, about adding and subtracting projects to to meet the needs that we have out there. For for budget updates, the the total 2020 asphalt construction program, which includes a chip seal, crack seal, the asphalt overlay and the shouldering, is estimated to be $2,270,310. And why I say it's estimated is just because we haven't finished some of those projects yet. The available budget for those projects is $2,361,835, and that budget's a combination of the asphalt contractual and shouldering line items, as well as the the landfill tipping fees and the federal fund exchange program. The bridge projects will be taken from the two mil special bridge construction account, and it has a current balance of $2,210,841. It seems like it's starting to to get some significant money sitting there. I just wanted to remind you, though, that, you know, we've got a three box projects right now. You know, you're looking at about a little over $500,000 for each one of those, you know, one that's been bid and awarded to Reese Construction. We got two more that I want to do this year, as well as, you know, around a $600,000 project on on Minner Road, you know, and so we'll be using a lot of these funds next next year. And then the road improvement projects will be taken from the one mil special road construction account, and has a current balance of $880,545. Are there any questions?
Questions or comments from commissioners, please?
Well, I just want to commend you, the the whole Road and Bridge Department, everybody on taking care of the culvert that went out on Holmes Road, and it was done very within a, you know, three or four weeks, it was done and taken care of, and the everybody was very happy that that got done so quickly and very, very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say that, like I said earlier in Darren's presentation, we're we're one rain event away from complaints and problems and so forth, but it's been a problem free summer for me in terms of fielding complaints during harvest and so forth. And and I'm these are my comments, the others can say what they want to say, but you guys are doing a great job out there. And and every every comment that I've heard from a constituent for, I'd say, at least 90 days, has been a positive comment. And and they've even made it a point to say, hey, the roads are really looking good. They're we're doing a lot of them, glad you did this, or glad you did that. And and so I, you know, you deserve a pat on the back, and we're not always able to do that, so good job.
Thank you.
It'd be remiss for me not to say that I have had a lot of comments on West Waterwell Road. The people that live out there are very appreciative of it. I hope that they've shared some of that with you or or with Phil, but they were quite excited that the project finally did take place after after all those years, and I commend you and your efforts to see that project through.
Well, I did receive a couple thank you cards, you know, and I don't get those very often, so.
Nor do we.
Oh, yeah, almost never. And so, yeah, I I keep those those thank you cards underneath my monitors just as a visual reminder, you know, that there's, you know, you do, you know, typically, you hear a lot of the complaints and that, you know, the issues out there, and it's just it's nice to have that reminder that, you know, there people are appreciative out there as well.
Okay, well, thank you for your number one, for your hard work, but thank you for a detailed informational project here also. So thanks, Darren. We'll move to item number four.
Community Development Block Grant Applications Update, Committee Appointment Discussion, Chairman Vidrickson.
As you remember, last week, commissioners, we were talking about putting a a committee together to disperse the funds that would go out to the businesses outside of the city of Salina. And with your approval, I have put together that committee, and and like I said, it's for your approval, and I'll I'll share that with you now. I have asked Deputy Commissioner Deputy Hannah Stanbaugh to be our chairman for this committee. I've also asked Phil to serve on it, simply because of all his knowledge and background and so forth. I have also asked two commissioners, Commissioner Shadwick and Commissioner Wees, to serve on that committee, along with the Citizen at Large of Christian Gunn. So with your approval, if we can get a consensus on that, we'll let them go ahead and get started on that rather quickly and get the funds out to those businesses that are so deserving of it. So comments?
Sounds good.
Okay?
Best of luck with it.
Okay, we'll go forward with that committee. And Hannah, Deputy Administrator Hannah, you are in charge. You are the boss. And like I said, I would like you to get that done ASAP, and you get your committee together and and get the funds out to the people that are so deserving.
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll move to item number five.
Commissioners' comments.
Anybody have anything?
Nope.
Item six.
Announcements.
Get out and vote if you haven't already. And it looks like we have an executive session. Before I do that, before we go into executive session, is there any commissioner who would like to have a break for a couple of minutes? No?
I'm good.
Okay, we will we'll have an executive session.
10 minutes.
Marilyn, I'll let you describe.
We'd like an executive session, 10 minutes, non-elected personnel to discuss a performance evaluation.
Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the non-elected personnel exemption to the Kansas Open Meeting Act for 10 minutes and reconvene in this room at 10:30. to the Kansas Open Meeting Act for 10 minutes, and reconvene in this room at 10:39.
Second motion. It's been moved to second, then we move into executive session, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. All right, I call the meeting of the Board of Commissioners back to order, uh, coming from the executive session. I will say that there was, uh, no action taken, and at this time, does anyone have any comments, further comments? If not, uh...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
We have a birthday guy with us, so, we'd like to wish him a happy birthday.
He may not publicly want that to be...
No comment.
Today is, uh, the birthday of, and a significant one at that, and I won't say which one it is, I'll let him announce that during the paper, but, uh, our, our Administrator Philip Smith Haynes, this is, is a milestone birthday for him, and, uh, happy birthday to you, Phil.
Happy birthday.
At this time, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved to second, and we adjourn today's meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. We're adjourned.